Thank you very much for coming in. We are the Colombian editorial boards, happy to welcome candidates for the Vancouver City Council Position Number Five, Ty Stober and Linda Glover. And I should mention that candidate Kathleen Metzger declined our invitation to meet with us today, so unfortunately we have the two of you. And you each can have some more time. Also would like to welcome reporter Amy Fisher, who will be sitting in. She will not be asking questions in this forum, but I might want to speak with you afterwards. And as noted, we are videotaping this for use on our web, and we'll post the video unedited for the benefit of our readers. So, anyway, we'll start with introductions and give you a moment to please introduce yourselves, give a little background if you like, tell us why you are the best candidate for this position, and we'll try to limit each of these to two minutes apiece. So we'll start with Ty.
Okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to come in today. My name's Ty Stober. I've lived or worked in Vancouver, starting in 1992, and been here for much the last two decades. You know, started out working for a manufacturing company on the east side of Vancouver, worked in their sales and marketing team, and eventually led their national sales team. Went back east for five years, two and a half in North Carolina, getting my graduate degree in business administration, and two and a half working in Baltimore. Came back to town and participated in a number of entrepreneurial ventures over the years, eventually going to work for an organization called the Northwest Energy Efficiency Alliance, where I spent the last three years, working on regional programs to assist utilities with energy efficiency measures. This is, as you know, my second run at city council. I'm doing it out of a passion and love for this city. You know, I've invested my adult life here. My family is invested in this community, and I'm very excited about the opportunities that come, that are presented to our community, given the core strengths that we have. You know, why do I believe that I'm the right person at the right time? I think I bring a very broad perspective on understanding systems, understanding the impact that decisions that a government can make, and how those decisions will impact our business community, our quality of life, and look forward to working with council on really driving the ultimate goal of growing our economic health of our community.
Thank you. And Linda?
I'm Linda Glover, Executive Director of Gifts for Our Community, a nonprofit. It started about 18 years ago. In the last 10 years, we've had Divine Consign down on Ninth and Main, and our mission is to get resources to nonprofits. We have fabulous nonprofits, they do great work, but they always need more resources. And so we do that in a variety of ways. I came to town 20 years ago. Before that, I was in Corlaine, Idaho, where there's great saying, and was a teacher for 10 years, and then I was an elementary principal for 10 years. And lots of experiences, different skill sets from teaching, and then as a principal, working with people, playing people together, collaborating in an organization, you know, with a board, and with a pretty good-sized budget that's similar to city government, and worked in middle management there. And then me and my daughter married and moved to Vancouver, and we came over, and my husband and I. And I thought about staying in education, but I thought I'd look around and see what else was available, and kind of got caught up in the holiday shop, and on and on I went till we're here, I've been here today. I think that it's a good time in my, for me right now, to be professionally, to be involved in running for city council. I think that my varied background, being a teacher, the skill sets you get from that, from being a businessperson downtown Main Street, you know, we've been down there for 10 years, we've been down there for the rough time through the recession, we know a lot about downtown, know a lot about how to make a business successful. We had some pretty scary months where we had some meetings talking about how do we exit this, but we hung on and we made it through that. I've been involved with Vancouver's Downtown Association, where we've really been working hard to revitalize downtown. And through all of that, I've made, known a lot of people, networking, built some credibility about my skills and my abilities, and I think that I'd be a good candidate and bring a wide variety of skills and interests and experience to the council.
Great, thank you. We'll start, now we'll get into some of the issues involved. I'd like to start with, one of the biggest issues facing the city and the city council is funding for roads. This year, we have, I believe it's $130 million in projects that are being deferred. How would you propose that the city should find long-term funding to build and maintain roads? And we'll start with you.
Okay. Well, I think the city's doing an excellent job in going out and finding out what the community wants. You know, we know that they're in disarray, you know, what, how much, what kind of quality does a community really want for their roads? And they're doing an interactive survey that I took, and I thought was very interesting, because they have you fill in, you know, what do you want, what's your expectation for new roads, repair the roads, all of those things. So you go in and you put what you'd like to have. Then you move on, and it says, okay, how would you like to pay for that? So then you pluck in, you know, they only have a few options, you know, there's only three or four ways, you know, funding mechanisms for them to use. And so then you go in and you type in what you'd like to pay. And then they go on and say, oops, here's a gap. And so then you go back and think, okay, I guess I'll kind of lower my quality, and maybe I'll raise what I'll pay, and then you keep working until you finally get to a place where there's some, you know, some resolution. Excellent experience in finding out what it costs. You just can't say you want it, you gotta know how to pay for it. And I think it's great to go out to the community, I think it's been well-received, and people are really getting some experience and the exercise of how do you budget, even though we know it's important. Transportation's key for bringing in new business, it's key for emergency vehicles, it's an important part of what our community has to do. But we're well behind where we should be, and it's a big gap, and there needs to be some serious solutions brought to it. And I think going out and finding out what the people feel about it, what they expect for quality, and how they'd pay for it, is the best thing they could be doing.
But how would you pay for it?
How would I pay for it? I think it would be just, you know, everything would be on the table. I'd look at the different options and just see, you know, what is it, when we look at the whole picture of what we need, and go in and see which funding mechanisms would be the best one. I mean, there's the license tab.
What do you think is the best one?
It's a combination of what there is. I mean, there's license fee, there's, you know, there's different B and O tax, there's what else, there's another mechan, oh, head tax. There's a variety of things that would be on the table, and I think we'd have to do the study to find out what would be the best mix. I haven't, I don't remember what I put in for what I would be willing to put in, I think I was trying to just put in a kind of a mix of them all.
Ty?
I agree with Linda that the solution is going to have to be some, excuse me, combination of all the above. You can't, we can't do more than raise sales tax by a tenth of a percent, that's just untenable. So, and as Linda pointed out, if we, even if we do that one tenth, we don't come anywhere near. So then you add on some amount of property tax, the B and O tax, and there's a fourth and I've forgotten it as well. But the, I am glad that, when this first came forward, it appeared that council was going to try and put something on the ballot this November, and I was extremely concerned about that, because, you know, when I go out and talk to people at the door, I hear a lot of people say they're concerned about our transportation, but I hear a lot of people who aren't aware of those transportation issues that we have. So I was very concerned that trying to move something along to a November ballot, so I'm very glad that it looks at this point that it'd take a pass for a year, to give more time to have a good conversation with the community and bring it along. But it's going to have to be some combination. And that combination is probably going to have to include a B and O tax, which means that not just do we need to be interacting and getting buy-in from citizens, we also have to be actively interacting with our business leaders in order to, in order, so that they really feel the need and support it.
But by not putting it on the ballot this year, isn't that just kicking it down the road? At what point do we get to solutions instead of talking about it?
I, I don't, elections only can happen so often, and I don't see it as kicking it down the road. We are having a good conversation about it, and the fact that we're finally having a good, decent conversation, I think, is extremely important. And I think our community has a history of rushing things too quickly, and then meeting failure at the ballot box. We had a parks measure that we put out there, and I don't feel it had time in order to have a good, solid conversation with the community, and it got rushed, because from other experiences, you know, being involved with the Freedom to Marriage campaign, we knew that as soon as, as soon as something becomes, as soon as it's in the legislature or the ballot measure's been proposed, conversation gets, stops. And if people entrench at that point, it's very difficult, once that's there, to really influence the conversation. So we've got to have a conversation ahead of time before it gets to that point, so that people, so we have an opportunity to influence the conversation.
The, and I guess I would suspect what your answer might be to this, considering I think you're both in favor of looking for financial solutions to the issues that the city of Vancouver has. But the city has been on automatic pilot in terms of tax increases, they take the maximum, not 1% of the year. You feel like you'll fall into that pattern?
They can take, would you repeat that for me, please? They can take 1%?
Yeah, that's the maximum they can take, is 1% a year.
Do I think they'll continue taking that?
No, they are continuing to take it.
Okay.
To me, they will continue to do that, but the point really is where you stand on that, which is, will you fall in line with the idea that it's going to be a given that there's going to be 1% tax increases?
Oh, definitely. I mean, you know, we have limited funding. We lost some big funding mechanisms, you know, we had 6% sent for property tax, 6 or 7%, and we lost it down to 1%. We had the license plate fund, which was a huge amount that we lost. Our city, I think, just not, a few years before that, annexed a huge part of the city out east, and then we had trouble finding, trying to fund it. 1% property tax, I think, is more than reasonable, and it's, you know, what we can see from what's happening, it's not doing the job. I'm not saying, yes, I want us to raise that, I'm just saying, 1%, we need every dime of that.
So the only exception I take is the, is calling it fall in line. I don't consider it falling in line. Yes, I definitely support it, or I definitely believe that it's needed, you know, 1% is below the cost of inflation, the cost of consumer inflation, not even taking into account commercial inflation. So, yeah, I see myself voting for that.
What do you think, what do you both think, and I'll start with Ty here? We're doing a story that will appear shortly, that speaks about the finances needed to maintain the governmental workers, both in the county and the city. Obviously, running for city council, we'll talk about the city, but there is an enormous number that is out there that essentially supports the city workers, governmental workers. There is an enormous number out there that supports huge overtime dollars, primarily in the fire department and the police department. And we'll start with Linda. Do you have any sense of whether or not we need to tighten down the amount of money that public workers are getting in the city, or are you comfortable with what they're making, the overtime that they're getting, and how that may compare to the private sector, which all indications are, they're better off in the private sector?
Yeah, I would be, I'm supportive of that. You know, I think they, especially if you talk about the city, you know, they've been cut back, the departments have been cut back, they're doing the same amount of work with a lot fewer people, and working a lot harder. I think along with that, they've gotten a lot smarter, but I think that they are, if you look at comparables, and that's one of the few ways we have to gauge what they're made, they are, they're reasonable. I think the overtime...
What's your comparable that you're looking at?
When they negotiate salaries and wages, they always use comparables when they're...
You mean compare them to another firefighter, firefighter, for example?
Or another city, or a comparable size.
But not comparing them to the private sector?
I don't know, no, I don't know about that. Okay. And I think the overtime has happened because the force has been cut back so far, they don't have enough people to cover all the shifts. And I know I talked with the chief of police, and he just said, you know, that's getting to be a real challenge, because at first, it's great to have that overtime, and it looks like it's a nice addition to the paycheck, but they get tired. They get really tired of being on overtime, but we don't, they don't have enough workers to put in the next shift and the next shift and cover everything. So it's been done because they, the workforce, there's only, what, 190 policemen to cover a city 50 square miles large. They don't have enough, they barely can cover it. And if somebody's sick, somebody's injured, you know, we had a shooting, those people are off the line, and they can't get another person on line for another 18 months, so they've just got to do it by overtime. And I think, I, that's, I don't think they love that choice, but it's what they've been left to face.
So, there's a lot of assumptions that go into that question. Median household income in our community is well less than $50,000. So, you know, that encompasses people earning across the income spectrum. You know, you can take and question, you know, is $50,000 a living income in our community? And that's, a lot of indications that that's not really a living income. So comparables to the private sector of trained professionals, I don't think they're out of line for, when compared to individuals in the private sector that are trained. So, yeah.
Okay. Do you two know each other very well?
No. We've just been bumping into each other on the circuit.
Okay.
But before then, no.
Chicken dinner, should be.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a busy circuit.
Do you, are you familiar enough with one another to know where the differences are in what you kind of believe and what you stand for in terms of the city and what you do there?
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if we do.
I think you'll, you'll have to answer that question later on, you know, but usually by the time...
Is this the first forum that you guys have been together?
Mm-hmm.
On a scale of 1 to 10, with 5 being in the middle, obviously, and 1 being ultra-liberal and 10 being ultra-conservative, where do you put yourself, Ty?
It depends on what metric we're judging ourselves on, so...
Just grind it all through.
Yeah, yeah, so fiscally, I'm a little more conservative, you know, given the fact that I live in Vancouver, that kind of comes, you know, the fact that I choose to live in Vancouver indicates there is some fiscal conservatism there. I spent my twenties living in Vancouver because I didn't want to pay the income tax across the river. You know, socially, I am much more progressive. I've already said, I was state leader in the Freedom to Marriage campaign.
Yeah, but I really am asking this question, you've got to grind all of that stuff together and say, if I had to put a number on it, after I've ground it all together, what's the number?
And the extremes were again, what?
1 is ultra-liberal and 10 is ultra-conservative.
So, let's go 4.
Okay.
5.
See, that was the safe number.
Yeah.
Bye. Okay, bye.
So, Ty, you mentioned that you've run for office before. Have you, Linda?
No.
Is this the first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I thought. Just wondering.
For Vancouver, where would you stand, what policy would you support regarding the sale and use of fireworks? What should we do? Ty? You know, I grew up in, I grew up across the river, and grew up where you could buy sparklers, which, you know, sparklers cause a lot of injuries, but, you know, the number of fireworks that were available to us were very limited, was, it's a much different situation coming to this side of the river. The interesting thing, though, is over time, people from that side of the river are spending a lot more time buying stuff, and you go, and on a 4th of July, you see things that I never saw as a kid on that side. And it almost seems like we're becoming more conservative about fireworks while they're becoming less conservative. I, 1, we need to have, the city council needs to have the emergency power to outlaw fireworks, at a bare minimum, we need to have emergency power to outlaw fireworks in years such as this, where it's extremely dry. 2, I think it's really time for us as a community to come to an understanding that we need to be safe and reasonable in our fireworks.
What would you consider safe and reasonable?
Well, that's where, I don't want to get into a Jack Berkman mistake of...
I remember that.
Pardon?
You remember that?
Yes, where he said, "sparklers," and then it came back that sparklers were like the worst...
Weapon.
The worst, yeah, the biggest reason why people end up in the hospital. So, you know, things that blow up and go boom, and shoot up in the sky are, you know, they need to be small scale.
Well, would you consider just an all-out ban on private citizens shooting this stuff off and leave it to the professionals?
I think there, well, what I'm getting into is I think there are small exceptions that are reasonable, things that don't go boom, things that don't shoot off.
All right, so you would be looking for, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Some more reasonableness, but not an outright ban?
The more what it was in Oregon when I was a kid.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Linda?
You know, it's been interesting, because of the drought and because of the dry, I mean, it is scary to think what could happen. My hunch would be something's going to happen, I mean, then we guess there's already been a pretty bad fire and somebody lost their car. But, you know, we, they've looked into it, the governor doesn't have the authority to call a ban on fireworks, and the city doesn't have the authority, so I think that, you know, it's a 365-day decision before you do something, you know, to stop something like that. So I think when Ty says we need to have an emergency lever to pull, then I think that's right. I think in Vancouver, we're really fortunate that we do have a professional fireworks show. I mean, that does keep a lot of people from going out in their backyard, and I think that's wonderful, and it's, the community is supportive of that. It's kind of one of our kind of claims to fame, that we do such a great job at that. I think that the one day of shooting off fireworks, if we could just keep it to one day, I think that's a nice next step. I think three days, it pushes, a lot of organizations really depend on that. So I think it's something, if we were going to change it, we'd have to ease it along, so that the funding source for those organizations could be, they could find something to substitute for that. You know, it's a part of our tradition, and I think that if we really decide, if the community tells us, I mean, we're here to do what the community wants. If the community, not just a few people who were calling and complaining, but if the community really wants us to ban that, then I think we work toward that. Right now, if we said we were going to ban it, or we were going to stop it, or cut back on a certain amount, we don't have law enforcement to enforce it. We couldn't do anything about it. There'd be, it'd take so many people to go out and try to stop that. So I think it has to kind of evolve slowly, if we decide we want to go that direction. I think right now, if we even had the authority to call a ban, we'd have some, we'd be overrun with telephone calls of people saying, you said they couldn't do it, and my next door is doing it, my neighbor's doing it. And what would we do? They'd all be mad at city council, because you're not out there enforcing it. So I think all those things have got to be considered, but again, the decision isn't made for what I want. The decision is, what does our community feel? What's the balance for them between the traditional celebration of our independence or safety?
The city council and the county council have had a rocky relationship for several years now. Two-part question. I'll start with Linda. Who's more at fault in the breakdown in this relationship between the county and the city, and what can you do about it?
Well, you know, I remember, when I first came here, there was, it was pretty rocky. And then it kind of smoothed out for a while, and things were, we were kind of making some progress, and I think people were pretty hopeful, okay, maybe we can get united and work together and, you know, make this county better, stronger, because we're all working together. But in the last year or two, I mean, controversy, the county council is just riddled with complications and problems, and just, it just keeps coming up and coming up and coming up. So from looking at that, from the point of view of, you know, reading the paper and what I hear, I'm going to say this, the county is causing...
Can you think you could do anything about that?
Do anything about what? Do anything?
Do anything about the rocky relationship?
Yes, of course.
And what would that be?
Maybe working together, finding the things that we can work together on, what we can come together on, having conversations, just being prepared with information, making sure that, you know, we're aware what's going on there, what can we do to kind of find compromise or kind of mitigate that. You just can't give up. You just have to continue working, and right now, we have some pretty unusual circumstances. And, but we can't give up. We have to keep working to have it, because, like I said, together, we're so much stronger and better than we are when we're not working together, and...
Would you like to identify those unusual circumstances?
Somehow, Lou, I think you know who they are.
That would...
Yeah, so, you know, I think my awareness of the rift really started to focus when the city tried annexing, and I'm referring to just Vancouver, like a couple cities tried to annex, and the county dissolved the annexation board. You know, I have high, so, your direct question, I place the blame squarely in the county council. I have high hopes that after November, we will have three individuals on council that will...
Which council?
County council.
Thank you.
I know, it's, you know, yeah, and that knocking on a door right now is extremely confusing for people. Running for city council, are you running against Milky in the door? No, that's county, that's county. I'm extremely hopeful. I think that Councilwoman Stewart is doing a tremendous job right now. I'm extremely hopeful that there will be two other individuals, regardless of their political affiliation, that will be interested in having productive conversations.
And you could help lead that?
I'm, yes. You know, I, I guess one of the things I feel I bring is relationships, that I bring relationships with elected officials, not just here locally, but throughout the state, and actually across the river as well, and have the ability, when necessary, to reach out, you know, leverage those relationships to try and move ahead.
You're now stuck with Ty, but can you review on the proposed oil terminal?
I, I'm opposed to it, personally opposed to it, and there are two main reasons. One is Tesoro, when they've had problems in the past, has, in my view, shucked responsibility. They've tried to divert any sense of accountability when those situations have occurred. They've locked the doors to the facilities and kept people out, or, you know, in the case of their pipeline that burst in the Dakotas, it's out in the middle of nowhere, who cares? Secondly, I'm extremely concerned about Tesoro's willingness to spend money in local politics, and I'm really concerned about how that could tremendously affect our community going into the future. That being said, I recognize the economic impact of our port and the job growth engine that the port is for us as a city, and the focus of council in, you know, the oil terminal is a decision between the port, EFSEC, the governor, and I believe ultimately, the Supreme Court. The role of council is, in its relationship with the port, is how do we make sure that our transportation infrastructure is strong as possible, so that we can move goods and services in and out of the port, in order to make sure that those businesses down there can be effective in the job they're doing.
Okay. I also am, agree with what the council said and against the oil terminal, because, several reasons, but the overarching responsibility of city council is safety, public safety. reasons, but the overarching responsibility of city council is safety, public safety. And it, you know, it reaches every part of our community, safety with police, fire, water, parks, all kinds of things. And so, when you have a proposal that has the potential for the disaster that this could be, the city council can't support it. That's not their responsibility, so I think that's, but like Ty said, we are a transportation hub and the port's important. It's out to the seaway, we're on a railroad line, that's important. And we all need to work together because it is an economic driver and we do need those family wage jobs. So, it is, it's not, it's not an easy, of course, nothing that reaches city council is an easy problem. Everything's complex because of all the entities are involved. But, and I have a concern too. I'm kind of surprised, I guess it's because things can, like issues like this can turn into, like Ty talked before, you turn it into a political season and it turns into a hot button, just black or white. And it's not. Those trains are coming through our community right now. Two of them come through every single day. So, I really think our efforts and our energy and resources need to be put on keeping those, getting those rail cars safer and the rail lines safer. That's pressure on congress, pressure on our congressman, you know, we need to be putting the effort into making sure those changes happen because hazardous things are going down the middle of our city right now. And we don't seem to be talking a lot about that. It's just kind of like, in fact, I think the survey was done and this is just, I've heard this a couple different places, you know, when the citizens were polled, I think there was no large number of didn't, really weren't concerned about it. It wasn't a big issue to them. Well, it should be that, those hazardous ways, you know, products are coming through now. So, I think effort needs to be put in right now to make sure that rail cars and rail lines are safer.
So, would you fight that, the siding of the terminal in Vancouver and down the line or work on the safety element or both?
Well, if the oil goes someplace else, then we really need to make sure the rail lines are safe and the rail cars are safe, so that's important. So, I guess that would be the first thing, because if it's placed north and it's going to come through here also, we don't have any say in that, but we should be fighting hard for the safety of our own community.
There seems to be an element in the community and you get these surveys that'll kind of divide the audience into people who feel like they, the focus ought to be on the safety element and the other big hunk is fight the siding of the thing. And by dividing the camp that way, it kind of makes it, I think, a little more possible for Tesoro to get what they want here. So, I'm a little worried about that myself. So, speaking of conflict in some of the organizations around town, the National Park Service and the Historic Reserve have had a little spat over the last two or three years that eventually involved Jamie Herrera and some legislation she was working on to try to straighten that out a little bit. Do you have some insight or thoughts on if there's a role for the city of Vancouver in straightening that out or are you concerned about it at all or how do you see that whole situation?
Well, I happen to sit on the Board of Trustees for the Fort Vancouver National Trust, so I have some background information in it. And it's unfortunate and the board feels it's unfortunate that we've gotten to this position at this point and is working very hard to make amends and to become good neighbors. And it's not easy. A lot of harm was done, a lot of damage was done, that's going to take time before parties can trust one another. But we're reaching out. I personally have reached out to Tracy and other people just so that she can begin to get to know us and begin to trust us. And I've told her that the board is very much giving direction to the staff, that we want this, we want to make amends and we want to be good neighbors and we'll go on from there. We shouldn't jump to what, we're not going back to where we were, but we need to find a new relationship and make it strong. So, I haven't another idea of some point. So, I think that, oh, and the city, you asked me about the city. You know, Jan Bader sits on the board as a liaison to the city and she is a talented lady and has lots of experience and knows, you know, a lot about what happens and communicates with a lot of different groups. And at the table during the trust meeting, she, and she's also the liaison for Tracy, she really helps mediate and bring groups together. And she's working on this one so we can resolve this and we can move on. And, you know, that national park is an absolutely amazing resource and so is the trust and the reserve. And with the new plans coming through the city on the barracks, you know, the potential and opportunity is unbelievable down there, it's so exciting. And so, it's, I mean, Tracy's doing, the national park's doing a wonderful job right now in bringing in, and she talked to me about a restaurant and some things they're bringing in, that'll really be exciting. And then the art community, possibility of that. So, I think in the future, we're going to see great things happening, even with the two groups if they're not working together, but if we can get them back together, it will be even better.
So, you're, I'm a private pilot, so have a connection to Pearson, understand the historical value of that and think it's a great, the museum is a great asset to our community. Your own reporting though showed that the city made some mistakes and probably set off some of the tender of what happened, what ended up transpiring. So, there is a, there's definitely a need to rebuild those relationships because, you know, as Linda said, we are so blessed as a community to have a national park right within our city, within walking distance of downtown. You know, other cities around the country would kill for that opportunity. And the more vital, vibrant that the entire reserve can become, the more we can leverage that as a, as an asset to our community. I, you're commuted into town for three years on C-Train and every now and then, I'd see the foreign couple get on the bus, making the assumption they were foreign, but they would get on the bus with a guidebook, kind of bewilderedly looking at what's going on, where we're going. But I'm certain that their guidebook was telling them, "You've got to come see Fort Vancouver." And so, I think there's so many opportunities for us to take that little spark and really create our own version of the Boston Freedom Trail that, you know, the guidebook says, "Get off at this stop" and the red brick road starts their journey through Vancouver. So, how do we, it is vital that those relationships get repaired because it's vital that that is an economic driver for our community.
And you mentioned C-Train. What do you foresee is the future for C-Train and what are your thoughts on bus rapid transit? And is there any way for the city and the other cities in the county to find some middle ground regarding public transportation?
So, I, it seems to me that the, that Vancouver and the other cities in our county have found plenty of middle ground over the year. That is not the current problem with C-Train. The problem with C-Train goes back to the relationship that all the cities in the county are having with the county. You know, I am excited, very excited about bus rapid transit because of the investment that is happening along the fourth plane corridor and an investment that, if it mirrors what has happened in other communities, can really cause a renaissance to happen in that corridor. So, very excited. Think, you know, the thing, the, having access to public transportation is very vital for a wide spectrum of individuals in our community. There are plenty of seniors in our community that really rely on that bus in order to get them around. There are plenty of people at the low-income level that rely on that to get around and there's people like myself who, if I had the opportunity, I would sell my car and rely totally on C-Train. So, I am always going to be an advocate for strong public transportation resources because I think it is a vital component of the entire transportation system of our, of our community. And there's probably another part of that question, I forgot it, but...
I think you covered it.
Okay.
So, Linda?
I agree with what Ty is saying. You know, there's many people who aren't able to drive, aren't able to afford a car and it is their main mode of transportation and it's vital. That's how they get around to doctors, grocery stores, to work, those kinds of things. And so, I think the support of that is very important. Again, like Ty said, you know, the problems that we're having on the C-Train board kind of come around to the same kind of problems we're having with other things to do with the county. The bus rapid transit, you know, when it first, they first brought it up and brought it to us in downtown Vancouver and with the VDA and they've been, they've worked with us and they've made, kept us informed and they've asked us for our input and they've really done a good job being partners with us. But we were a little skittish. We were a little nervous. We worked awfully hard and put a lot of money into Seventh Street so we wouldn't have that kind of transit change and people, the element that, weren't bus riders necessarily, but they were hanging out there. And we worked awfully hard to change that and we were pretty nervous, but they worked with us. They've shown us a lot of statistics and studies that those bus stops can become economic drivers. You know, that end of town where it turns around, there's not a lot going on right now, but I think that they showed us that that development can happen, so wouldn't that be exciting? Wouldn't it be exciting that add in the town could, you know, flourish and be a better, have a better economy? And so, in that way, I support bus rapid transit. They've done a good job of designing it. I've been involved in the design for the stops and how the cars look and, you know, it's looking to the future. It's a little bit different than we've had before and it feels a little modern to some people, but it is, that is what is happening in the future. Other communities do very, very well supporting public transit. It's, this community is having a hard time coming along with that, but I think it's exciting.
The city of Vancouver, as we know, several years ago, annexed east. What are your thoughts about the possibility of annexing your, something, Salmon Creek for the Laita area?
Well, I know that, I've had conversations with development people lately trying to find out what, you know, kind of services the city provides and what's kind of the roadblocks to development and that kind of thing because we need jobs. To have jobs, you have to have that kind of development. So, that area is mentioned, that it's a pretty rich resource and there's some space. We don't have a lot of usable, buildable land right now, I mean, so people, developers hire there. But that's a long way off. We've got big problems to fix. We can't build more roads and more sewer and more water until we get what we have maintained and in better shape. And then if we get to that point, then I think we, then maybe that might be the time to look into that.
So, as we've, as history has shown us, annexation north cannot be forced on the community. They have to be willing participants in that. I get the feeling they're getting closer to that. Some very longtime staunch advocates of staying separate have even started to whisper rumors that maybe they want to be part of the city. To Linda's point though, there are economic concerns and the great dream that was annexing east has proven to be a lot more difficult than what was originally, originally thought it would be. A lot of people out there still have some hard feelings that things that were promised have not come to fruition. So, we would have to be very cautious as a city to make sure that, as Linda said, that we could take on those burdens that would come with really, you know, I mean, at its basis, Hazeldale, Salmon Creek are urban areas.
Right.
But they've developed as urban areas in the context of a county that didn't have urban requirements on them. So, bringing them up to a same standard is going to be costly.
Do you think, by the way, that these rumors that are being whispered in your ear about people coming around to thinking that it's a good idea to be part of the city has anything to do with the makeup of the county council?
I would never, never imply such a thing, never, never.
Thought it answered. How about you?
I wouldn't imply that either.
No, okay. No implication.
No indication whatsoever that has anything to do with county council, not enough structure.
Thank you. Including the issues we have touched upon or some we haven't mentioned, what is the most pressing issue facing the city council? What is the first thing you would want to jump in and take care of?
It's the transportation issue. Because we have...
Primarily mass transportation?
Pardon?
Mass transportation.
No, no, actually, let me re-say that. It's infrastructure, infrastructure in general. We are here, we stand on this spot because for thousands of years, people have come here, have gathered here because we're the easiest place on, to, for people to gather. The river provided transportation, it provided food and sustenance and private commerce. It was an easy path over the mountains as well. This is where people gathered. That is our core competency is to be a transportation hub. And so, when we, when we don't invest in our infrastructure, we're shooting ourselves in the foot, we're turning away from, from what is our competitive geological advantage here. But it, but it's more, to me, it's not just our roads and public transportation and sidewalks. I am very concerned that, about our IT infrastructure because we are, we are moving in a direction where IT, where information technology, where the internet truly is driving the next wave of innovation in our economy. And it concerns me, you know, Google's telling Portland, "Maybe," and they're telling Vancouver, "Not a chance." And, you know, CenturyLink, two or three names back, CenturyLink likes to send me a brochure that says, "We've got fiber." Well, yeah, you've got fiber, you know, down at the central office and I would expect that you have fiber at the central office, but that doesn't do any good between the central office and here, you know, and Comcast, well, yeah, gotta love Comcast as well. So, there is, we need to be advocating as a city for those other providers or pushing the ones that we have to be bringing in world-class internet service into our homes so that that innovation happens. Additionally, other infrastructure that we need to have is we need an incubator space in downtown Vancouver. Having, having been involved with startups in our community, knowing how hard it is to make, get something off the ground when you're at the same time having to sweat about your rent and struggling to get that quality internet access to your business, being able to have an incubator space where we can be taking bets on a bunch of ideas in order to seed potential growth in the future, I think is another piece of infrastructure we're looking for.
Linda?
Okay, again, it's pretty complex. We know a cert, the city makes, has to make sure that they're providing services and maintaining those services. And then right behind that, there's also that we need to maintain our assets that we have, you know, the buildings, the things that we have that have been kind of been disarrayed, it's important that that's been, that we address that too, which the city is doing. And transportation is definitely, is important too. But right up in there too is jobs. You know, we need good family wage earning jobs so the people can quit going across the river and that we can draw in new businesses which will then bring in more property taxes, more sales taxes, more people to shop in my store, more people to shop in, so we can get a grocery store. I mean, we need the economic driver that we can address transportation and we can address those other needs. So, I think although the city doesn't produce the actual jobs, the city really needs to be providing a strong environment and a strong infrastructure like Ty talked about and maybe even doing a little more towards, and I, they have a great partner, we see our EDC, but, you know, maybe we need to be doing a little bit more on marketing and touting what a great place is to have a business. You know, people say, "What do you want to see in the city in four years? What would you want to accomplish?" And here's a little scenario I run through my head. I would love to have somebody at a conference somewhere pick up a marketing piece that tells them how fabulous Vancouver is and what a smart business decision it is to come here. So, they decide to come and see and as they drive into the city, they see they're welcomed by inviting entrances, so they feel welcomed into the city. they feel welcomed into the city. And as they drive around, they see well-maintained streets, they see well-maintained parks, they have a sense that they're safe, they see policemen, you know, more than just every few days, they see policemen, they see, they have a sense that they're, that they're safe. They talk to people and find out, yeah, there is a great education here. And they just feel the vibrancy and the vitality of the community. And then they say, okay. I look around and I think this is a place where my business and my family could thrive. And they start to bring a business here. There's a whole bunch in that scenario that we'd have to do in four years, but I think that that's what I'd like to see at the end of four years, is people know about what a great place is to do business, and they come, and we start bringing some of the 60,000 who leave us over. And we have a little, I think Vancouver needs to do a little more work on polishing its image. You know, when I got here, I was always surprised to see that there really wasn't an identity to Vancouver. You know, I came from the wheat fields of Montana. We had nothing but wheat fields and wind, and we were proud of our big sky. I mean, that's what we had to be proud of, and we were proud of our big sky. You get here and I, people love Vancouver, they have a lot of good things to say about it, but for some reason, the city struggles with being, having its own identity. It's a full-service big city. There's no reason why we, we don't have to be a better committee. I mean, yes, we do have jobs going over there, but we are a full-service city that have amazing resources and amazing opportunities before us right now. And I just think we need to polish up our image and our identity and be a little more confident, stand up and say it's a great place to come and live.
What should our identity be?
Well, you know, I've been in lots of committee meetings on that over the years. And interesting, our community, when you get together, and those, I don't know how many of us have been, but when you get together, they can list and list all the attributes, all the assets, all the values, and the room agrees. There's very little dissent on what our assets are. But when you get down to really, okay, let's just nail it, what is it that we are, then the discussion falls apart. People back away and say, well, and it's kind of like, well, who do you think you are telling us what we're going to be? Well, who do you think? And then you try to get a group together and it kind of, it falls apart. I don't know why it falls apart, but I'm involved, I've only been here for 20 years and I've been involved in two stabs at it. So I think that for the complexity of how this community was settled and the history of the, of the jobs, all those things come together, but they're just, I would really like to see a, a group that's deemed appropriate, whoever that would be, to come together. And I think the city leads that. Comes together and just says, okay, here's where we are. Once we know what we are and we have our identity, then we can sell ourselves. Then you can say in a couple of short words, this is why we're a great city and this is what we really stand for. And, you know, we have so much along the side of the mighty Columbia. I mean, we've got a lot to sell. It's not, you don't have to sit in a little town out in the sticks and try to think up something great. It's here. The opportunities are here.
Could you figure out a catchphrase for us?
I'd love to. Yeah, no.
You could go to marketing and make a million dollars.
Yeah, I know. Well, I had a good conversation with Betsy Henning on this exact topic, and her suggestion was we've also got to figure out what we're not, and that's something that, and one thing I don't want to be is Vantucky. And while it's fun to joke about Bamsterdam, that's really not what we want to be either. You know, we need to be a vibrant community that people want to be here. And it's got to be, the Columbia and the Fort have got to be the two primary drivers of that for us and that identity for us, because those are our two biggest assets.
Well, Portland's got two, right? They got Rose City and they got the city of bridges. Can we take one of those, or maybe? I, no. What about prunes?
Except where we cut them all down.
We love our history.
We've got an apple tree, though.
We do. We're fighting hard for that tree.
It's holding on.
It's not pretty, but it's there.
Tag it out.
It's two or three of those. It's there.
One minute each, give us your final pitch. Please mention any notable endorsements you might have. We'll start this time.
You know, I, as I started with, you know, I'm extremely passionate about this community and where we're going, and feel that I can bring relationships, I can bring a vision for, for driving us towards something better than where we're at right now. I have, given that I've had a couple attempts behind me, I've been able to build relationships in the community, really proud of the people who are standing behind me. You know, the Net Cleveland, Jim Muller, Sharon Wiley, Monica Stonier, Tim Probst, to name just a few, Betsy Henning. Other names are escaping me. But very, feeling very blessed by all those people that really are standing behind me and so excited that I built those relationships.
Thank you. And Linda?
And how did you phrase the question again?
Give us your final pitch to the voters, and please mention any notable endorsements.
I think I'm a good person for the job because of my varied experience. I have experience as an educator, I have experience as a principal, bringing people together, did some pretty extensive projects doing that, and I feel that I have a lot of skill at that. And then I have the experience of being a downtown businessperson on Main Street. We don't have a small business voice on the city council. And I have experience working with the city, working with Vancouver's Town Association, and I think that I can be a strong voice for small business. I have, know a lot of people, I've worked hard in the community, I have quite a network of people I know through nonprofits. We've, this is our 10-year anniversary this year, this week, and we look back and we've supported and helped over almost 200 nonprofits in our community. That, really what we're doing is working, whether it's a newborn, or if it's somebody in hospice, or if it's some, if it's a dancer who has a dream, we've done all we can to support them to make their dreams come true. And that's really raising the quality of our community. In little ways, but we keep going and we keep going, you know, we're giving over $50,000 a year to support a lot, a lot of different efforts. We try to really reach across the community. So I think all those experiences make me somebody who has, could speak strongly, have a lot of confidence, lead, help lead the city council, and I'm excited about it. It's, you know, I think people say, two things they ask me, why are you running for city council and are you crazy? But I think that I really want to work with the people and for the people. I want to work for the people right now because everybody's saying, somebody needs to stand up and do this, somebody needs to step forward. We need good, balanced, objective people to be on, in government across the country, but, you know. And I'm, I'll stand up and work for them. I'm, I'm excited about it, I wanted to do that, so that's working for them. And then to work with them, it takes collaboration skills, it takes experience. And I think my, the thing I can see, I can probably be most proud of in that is that I've, we've run a business down Main Street six days a week for 10 years with volunteers. It speaks to, I can bring people together, I can make them feel respected, I can, they can feel that they have a lot of value, and they come every, once a week for 10 years. So that shows the skills that I have to bring people together and work together. It's not easy to keep all these volunteers happy, and we do it. So I think that, that's what, all those experiences, I think, would make me the right person for the job. And my endorsements at this point, it's Larry Smith, the person who's leaving the position. He called me immediately when I announced and was very excited and is doing everything he can to help me, to support me. The Women's Caucus is one group that has endorsed me, and the Young Dems have supported me, which, it's exciting to go to their meetings and see a group of young people caring about their community and caring about trying to make a party strong and have a voice. And they started out five, a year ago with five people, and they've got 30 people, and they've got energy, and they, they're go-getters, and they want to make a difference. And that's fun to be in, because we worry so much about our young people being disconnected. They're fighting hard to be connected. So those are the two groups now, I'm pursuing other ones. There's a number of people in the community that are supporting me, those are all listed on the website.
Great. Well, thanks to both of you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.